And consultation with the planning board, it is anticipated that it will be a coordinated review. So it makes little sense for this board to go through the motions, have them do that analysis for our purposes and an uncoordination seeker, send them back to the planning board, and how likely that they could be coming back for changes. So we're trying to streamline the process as efficiently as we can. So with that said, we will set the public hearing for June 17th. As to the interpretation only, based on the interpretation, they will then go back to the planning board with the appropriate plans.
Can I have a question?
Yes. When you speak, if you wouldn't mind stating your name, your address, and then make your comment or ask your question.
I'm Paul Cadda, 35 East Main Street. I'd like to know if the location of the Moot and Creek has anything to do with the zoning for this property, because I'm under the impression you can't build closer to the creek.
Zoning, that would be, so that would be planning more so than zoning. Zoning, we rule on codes, on lot lengths, widths, depths. We don't really, that's not our position. We vote, we rule on what the code is in the village, on impact, but that is more planning.
So it has, you have nothing to do with that section of the street?
We, well, we can't take that into consideration, really.
Because I was under the impression, at least from my home, that I can't even build a fence along my property down towards the water because the water has the right of way.
I'm a Cardinal Drive survivor. I feel your pain. I've been there, done that for 35 years. Believe me, I know.
But that does continue down the creek.
I think he's going to touch on the 100-year flood mark whenever he speaks about it.
Right. And I'm sure that the planning board will address that. But that is the planning board's, that's the venue for that type of question, not necessarily the zoning board.
I have one other question, and it probably has nothing, I'm not sure what department it is. So, so people that want to make the apartments are the same people that own 61 Main Street now?
I believe so, yeah. I believe so.
And is this the same property that seems to have been under some kind of investigation for being a group home, or something that maybe wasn't zoned or planned properly for?
No, well, to my knowledge, it was not a group home. I, I don't, I don't know any more than that, but to my knowledge, it was not, you're talking about a state group home?
I'm talking about the police slash sheriff's department having an investigation about the home.
My name is Brian Gibson. How do you do? That was subject to litigation, and it was resolved in litigation. And you might want to, and I, it has nothing to do with this application, but it was a matter that was resolved.
I just wanted to know if it was the same people that have problems that were trying to build more.
It's the same owner.
Okay, thank you.
Is motion here tonight?
No. I, I don't think we need to make any more presentations to the board at this point because it, because we have to make a public hearing.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be official, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it's up to you if you want to.
No, so we can back our vague to see you next month.
See you June 17th.
And I will coordinate with you to ensure the proper public notice.
Great, very good. Thank you very much. And then, and then we'll see where we're going to go. Great, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for understanding. Okay, so the next on our agenda is Mr. Bailey here?
Yes.
Benny, you're here, yeah, okay. This is a continuance. For those of you who are not on Zoom or here at the meeting, this is a matter that has been carried over from a couple months ago. This is in regard to one Nicole Street. We don't have to read the public notice, it was already read when we opened it.
You did close the public hearing.
We did close the public hearing, yeah. Well, that, yeah, that was the confusing part.
Yes, you did close, based on, I did, I did watch all the videos. You did close the public hearing.
Right.
And in addition, the last time this was before you, which was, the applicant did not appear, which was the March 15th meeting, was because of the 239 review. The 239 review has come back, and it indicated that it was for local determination. There were not any significant, there weren't any comments.
So the county, what, the attorney is stating is that 239, we have to send it to the county. To see if the county, this is a usual thing that happens. If the county has any issues as far as any type of change in variances or anything like that, or if we're building something, we have to always first check with the county to see if they have any issue. The county has no issue, they are leaving it up to local, which is us. So if that makes any sense. All right, so.
Unless, I'll give Mr. Bailey an opportunity, unless he wants to add anything?
Well, no, I think you may afford to mention, the only thing I'll add, I guess, is I drove past the property and the house today, and there's no way that that, that the two-family dwelling in that house creates a detriment to the neighborhood or the environment. More importantly, there's no evidence.
My only concern, and my thoughts on this, and I've been on the zoning board for about 11, 12 years now, we have denied, back in 2017, 176 East Main Street, which is in R-100 as well, we denied a two-family house there because of variances, because of lot lines not having the proper distances. We also denied another applicant in the house, and I apologize, I don't remember the address, across the street from A+. We denied that request as well because it set a precedent, because of lot lines as well, and it didn't meet our codes. So I just wanted to share that with the board, that this has been something that we have stood pretty firm on as far as keeping the neighborhood. In my, my feeling is that it would impact the neighborhood because we're setting a precedent where we're allowing, you know, lines to be changed and distances to be lowered, and this will domino effect all the way down the road. And this board has stood firm on keeping the R-100 the way it is. And to my knowledge, there are no other two-family homes anywhere down from here to the village, or even a little bit further. There are, however, or were, mother-daughter, which is a whole different story. A mother-daughter is if you have a family member, the building inspector then goes to the home every year with an affidavit, they have to sign it, the family, to basically, you know, swear that the family members living there are not renting it out, they're not, you know, advertising for tenants. So, to my knowledge, there are no other two-family houses. That's all, what I have to say. Any other board member?
I do just want to add to the record, I did pull the property card from the Orange County Parcel Bureau, I did that this afternoon, and I'll provide a copy to Mr. Bailey. The property class is now, is now been, and the new assessment role is designated as 215, which is one fam res with apartment. So that's.
I'm sorry, is it 215?
215.
Mother-daughter.
It, it's labeled one, it's one, is one family residential with apartment, essentially a mother-daughter. So, I'm going to give Mr. Bailey.
And who made that determination?
I'm assuming, based on the county, it was an assessor's determination.
So the village assessor did that?
No, that's town, we don't have, we.
Oh, town assessor.
The town assessor does that. And I, we, I.
What did the town assessor base that on?
I don't, I don't know.
We don't know, we didn't, I haven't spoken with the assessor.
I just, I just pulled the, Ben, I just pulled the property this afternoon.
I understand, I just think it's interesting that after this application was made, that suddenly the designation was changed.
There is no one from this board that had any conversation, and not that that would matter, because the assessor does what the assessor wants. We don't, we don't have any say in it. Jim, Steve, Benny, you have any thoughts?
Personally, I totally agree with what you said. I think we're walking up the wrong tree. If we approve this, and you're going to start getting people in here every month to do the same thing and try to make profit, it's, it's, it's not what this area is for.
Well, we're following the code.
Right.
We're following the code, and, and the line, there's not enough space to allow a two-family.
Your requested variances are over 50%. So to me, that right there is setting a precedent, if we were to approve it.
Right. My concern is that I believe that it requires a 225-foot frontage on there, and by making, giving a variance on that would set a precedent that other homeowners could possibly decide to do the same thing, and either divide their property up and turn it into multiple homes on the same lot of property there. And I think we'd be opening up a can of worms, and it'll cause a lot of problems for us if we do give a variance on this. I think we're better off staying with the required frontage that's needed.
The R-100.
You are 100%.
Right.
Madam Chairperson, I did take the liberty of outlining a draft. Because there were two separate applications, I wanted to be sure that the board analyzed and addressed the two separate applications. So I did do an outline for your consideration, okay? All right. The applicant has submitted two applications, one was dated June 5th, 2020, and there was a second revised application, December 20, 2020, okay? The first determination was a notice of appeal from the April 7 ruling that the property had been illegally changed. Our building inspector had issued, had ordered a remedy, okay, that the property has been illegally changed, illegally changed from a single-family dwelling to, into a two-family. In essence, that application sought an interpretation that the, that that use was a pre-existing non-conforming use, and that the violation was, was not correct. In the alternative, the applicant asked for a use variance under the code. They then came, they then came back, I believe, at some point in the, in the fall, they found the special exception use permit that applies in our code that allows RA uses in the R-100 zone.
Right.
They then made an application to the planning board for the special exception use. By letter dated December 2nd, the building inspector determined that the fault standards of the RA district is set forth in 315-10 apply. And the applicant has appealed and has determined it can, in there, the current request for relief is one, an interpretation, does the RA standard, do the RA standards apply, or do the R-100 standards apply? Based on whatever that answer is, Benny asks us to analyze whether the corresponding area variances are warranted, okay? The applicant threw his counsel, in addition to the application materials, I have letters of March 2nd and from March 17th. And then I set forth the procedural history. Mr. Werker has purchased the property at a foreclosure auction in July of 2019. I did cite the relevant deed, U.S. Library 14613, that's page 627. Mr. Werker subsequently conveyed the property to the applicant LLC in February of 2020, okay? Based on the testimony, it appears that Mr. Werker is a member of the applicant LLC, the addresses on the deed are the same.
Right.
Okay? On April 7th, again, the building inspector issued an order, ordered a remedy violation, again, that the house was illegally changed to a two-family, okay? We have the June 5th application. On August 5th, 2020, the applicant applied to the village planning board again for that special use, special exception use permit, okay? It was referred to us, the minimum lot area, the variance from 40,000 square feet to 17,960. Frontage variance of 225 feet to 160 feet. Front yard setback variance from 45 feet to 40.7 feet. One side yard setback variance from 40 feet to, one side yard is 9.3, and the other is 23.8. Both side yard total setback variance from 100 feet to 33.1 feet. I will note, there is a discrepancy. The building inspector's determination references 19,000 square feet and change. The survey references 17,960. We're going to use the lower number to make sure that we incorporate everything. If I'm off on the, on the lower number than the higher number.
How much was the lower number?
17,960 square feet, and that was on the survey.
Right.
If we were to grant the variance, if I'm wrong.
It would be a higher percentage.
It would be fine.
Right.
If I grant the variance to the 19,000 number and I'm wrong, then we have to redo it.
Right.
Okay. The applicant appeared January 20th, 2021, and February 3rd and March 3rd. There was also a meeting on January 27th, okay? The village attorney did submit a memorandum clarifying the testimony of the village building inspector dated January 26th. That should be, that is incorporated into our record, okay? The relief sought is a type 2 action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and no environmental review is required, okay? We talked about, the matter was referred to Orange County Planning, and that it is a matter for local determination, okay? You'll see, I've, I've asked you in my outline to answer each question. Findings of fact, as to the request for the interpretation that the property is a pre-existing non-conforming two-family dwelling. I do note that there is no certificate of occupancy, that the property is a lawful two-family. There is not, does not appear to be a letter that the current used predate zoning. The building department file, I note, contains a permit for a mother-daughter unit. The file contains an affidavit signed by the prior owner entitled Karen Carlo. That affidavit indicated, we fully realize we have no right to have or maintain a two-family dwelling. That will be incorporated at length in any decision. The applicant has submitted tax bills dating back to 2017, indicating the property listed as 220, which is the designation for two-family residential. I note the testimony that the property was served by one water meter. I also note that the applicant's application for a special exception use permit, to me, serves as an acknowledgement that the property is not a pre-existing non-conforming use, because if it was a pre-existing use, there would not be a need to make that application.
Right.
That appeal is not before the board. That's a separate appeal which is not before the board.
Well, the appeal has to be, there's an application, and both applications.
And the application to the planning board is in the alternative. It's not a concession, that is not a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Okay, we'll note that for the record. Okay. Does anybody have anything to?
Well, my, my feeling is, is basically, you know, going off of what Ms. Cassidy just said, if it, if it was a pre-existing two-family home, and you purchased it as a two-family home, you wouldn't be coming before any boards with an application to make it a two-family home. That's number one. As far as your claim that you couldn't get any municipals because you didn't have an affidavit of a smoke detector, that's common knowledge that anybody can sign, that a Realtor, homeowner, yes. So I'm, I'm sorry to disagree with you, but that is a fact. It does not have to be done by an attorney or by anybody. You have to have somebody go in and swear that you see a smoke detector in there.
Is it okay?
I'm doing it for a living.
Smoke detector, it's okay.
No, you, you don't have to have an attorney do it, you just have to have an affidavit notarize that there is a smoke detector, and you can get your municipals. I do believe it would be a detriment to the neighborhood, because it will change the entire look of the entire neighborhood, which will be a domino effect, as I said earlier, all the way down the line, opening up the door. And I will repeat that this board, for as long as I've been here, has stood firm on your yards, your, your frontage, your side yards, and rear yards, not allowing that simply for the fact that we wanted to maintain the look that it is and not set a precedent. So this is not something that this board is just doing now, it's been in the past. We've done this for years. A 220, I know many, many appraisers, and they see a kitchen, they automatically will put it to family, when in fact, I know for a fact that was a mother-daughter. So I, my feeling is that, that I am not in favor of this simply because I don't, don't believe that there's that much of a detriment to you. That's just my feeling. Jim, Steve, Benny, anyone want to add anything?
You know, it's, it's a detriment, there's a couple issues on whether this is self-created or not, and from what I understand, the property was purchased at auction.
Well, that could get in there.
And basically, that becomes a problem because you're not, a lot of the research wasn't done, I don't think there was a search done on the property. A lot of, this sort of came out that it was really only a mother-daughter, and not a legal two-family, right from the beginning, the due diligence had been done. So I think that there's a little shortage on that. I, I'm also, a lot of times concerned about the, the financial effect on people when they walk into something thinking that there's a, it's a reasonable opportunity for them. But looking at all the numbers and seeing the price that you paid at auction on there, I think you can get a reasonable return on a single-family. There's no need to have to have it as a two-family to get your return, because it really is just an investment property. So I think that there's no financial hardship that would be caused by not allowing the variances in the situation.
We submitted documents that completely conflict with what you just said. We submitted documents.
You submitted documents, Mr. Bailey, that, that you could get more as a two-family because you're renting it, and it still boggles my mind that, that you can get that much for that minimal square foot for an apartment, but I guess there's a lot of people that are looking for apartments. But, you know, you could, you could get $25, $2800 a month for a one-family house, and for what you spent on it, and, you know, it's common knowledge as well that when you buy a foreclosure, you know, you're, you're taking a chance. And unfortunately, had you gotten the municipals, had you submitted the affidavit that there was a smoke detector, you would have gotten your municipals. Benny?
I think I can add to that.
Does anybody else have anything to say? Cassidy?
Just from a legal, legal standpoint, the, the tax assessor and the building inspector are two separate independent offices.
Right.
And there are oftentimes where an assessment can be inaccurate, and there is a remedy for that through an appeal process, that the property is wrongly classified.
Right.
The assessor cannot confer property rights in derogation of the zoning code.
Right.
Nor can the assessor make a determination that the property is in conformity with the zoning code. One such example is often a house that's mid-construction as of the tax status date will get a partial assessment as an improved. That does not necessarily mean that that house is entitled to a, is entitled to a CO.
Right.
It's merely that that house, at the time of the tax status date, based on the assessor's observation, either it's 25% complete, 50% complete. So there are often situations where the assessment is, is wrong. I have seen various assessor's cards in municipalities where they have counts wrong, the figures are, are simply wrong, whether they're going off of old information, something didn't get really from.
Right. Number was, a number was inverted, what, what, a million things.
I had a piece of property that I tried to sell, between the building department file and the assessor's card, and the real estate listing, there were four different, three or four different bets I cast.
Yeah, I've pulled cards from the village, the town, and the county, and three don't, you know, there's, there's misviews on all three of them. And that, that is one last comment that I want to make. There are cases where a property will be what they call grandfathered in, because they've been here for so long, that's how it always was, and then when ownership is changed, we put it back in good standings. We don't continue a violation. So even if it was a two-family at one time, you know, it changed ownership, we are correcting and, of something that was not correct.
And just, just so the record is clear, it was not, there is no CO on file that this is a two-family.
Right.
There is a, the file contains a document recognizing, expressly recognizing.
Allowing it to be.
Allowing it to be as a, as a gen, mother-daughter.
Right.
And the terms of that stipulation were that the property, the wall had to, it had to be open.
Right.
To have two separate independent units.
It also specifically stated that the property was not to be advertised for rent, for lease, or as a two-family when it was sold. And that was specific in the document.
So I would like, with respect solely to the question of whether this is a pre-existing use, if someone can make a motion, either determining that it is or is not a pre-existing use.
I'll make a motion that this was not a pre-existing two-family home.
A second question.
Jim?
Thank you.
I'm going to think Benny of the second.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but just my objection again, that this application, that appeal is not before the board, the public hearing was not held on that appeal.
I'm sorry, could you, could you explain, I couldn't understand the, the.
Yeah, that's what I had said earlier, the, that appeal as to whether or not it's a lawful non-conforming use, that is not before the board. The public hearing that was held did not, did not pertain to that appeal. So I'm objecting.
That's just a, that's just a comment that, that I made. I, I'm not talking about the appeal or anything, I'm just stating that it is our position that non-conforming should not remain non-conforming just because it was non-conforming before. You know, we don't want to continue with incorrectness, or fixing what, and it was never a two-family. It was a mother-daughter, it was a daycare, nursery, school type of, of. It was a mother-daughter, it was a daycare, nursery, school type of, of situation, but it was not a two-family. So it was never a two-family. Second?
We have a second if there are no votes.
Jim? Vote Jim, yes, aye on the, on the motion? It is not a non-conforming.
Yes, it is.
Okay, yes, yes, yes.
Aye, yes.
The next one adds to the use variance. Given the ability of the special exception use permit, a use variance is not required? Or just have a motion that the use variance is moved?
Make a motion that the variance. Are we voting on the appeal?
Yeah. And then the next issue is the interpretation, whether the bulk standards of the RA district or the R-100 districts apply. And I did prepare an outline. Section 315-16 of the zoning code states that within any R-100 district, the following special exception usage shall be permitted, E, any use permitted in an RA district. 315, excuse me, 11 states within the RA district, the following special exception usage shall be permitted. F, a two-family dwelling, provided that the lot upon which said dwelling is erected shall have a frontage of 225 feet. In such cases, the side yard requirements set forth in 315-10 shall be two times the minimum requirements. The zoning law refers by section number to the larger RA setbacks which are in 315-10. In addition, examining the list of permitted and special exception uses in the RA district reveals that every use except the two-family has no dimensional standards next to them. Here, the RA lists two-family with the 225-foot frontage plus specific reference to the RA setbacks found in 315-10.
Everyone can make a motion to adopt the funds, keep up funds?
A second.
Take a vote?
Just to, just to be, just to be clear that the RA setbacks in 310 apply.